Just touch anywhere.
From your mouse.
Recording in progress.
Call the January 17th Common Council Meeting Order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Adam Alderman-Holfer?
Here.
Elderwoman Eichmann?
Here.
Elderwoman Wilhelm?
Here.
Elderwoman Hanneman?
Here.
Alderman Barber?
Here.
And Alderman Nelson?
Here.
Lib. Corrin, please rise and join the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I do want to mention that tonight is Mastino's last council meeting. So I'm certain that will make it a doozy for her, something to remember. But I do ask that all of you take the opportunity over the next week, before next Wednesday, close the business, to stop at Peggy's office and wish her well in her future. She's done a great job for us, implemented a lot of changes. So I wish her well, and we all wish her well, and I hope you all stop by and say, "Wish her well" on her departure. With that, we go to item B1, which is the Assistant's Comment Period. Any citizen wishing to speak, please rise, come forward and give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to tell us. Anyone wishing to speak? Ms. Gint.
Gint, 9011 West Hawthorne Lane. I'm here for a couple of reasons. First of all, I would just like to know who at the city is responsible for some sort of master calendar, so when an item is tabled and not brought back, like, whose responsibility is to track that? I am aware of at least two instances that action items were unanimously approved and tabled, and the action item was supposed to be brought back in February of 2021, and another action item that was supposed to be brought in June of 2020. So I'm asking, what is the process to follow up and make sure these things that are tabled are brought back as they're requested to be? There's actually dates that were specifically pointed out that were supposed to be brought back. So what is the process for getting those items back on the agenda? Because obviously, this is two years, two and a half years, a year later, and I just think that's kind of very concerning as a citizen. So I would like to request that those items be put back on the next agendas for the Common Council and the Planning Commission. The other comment is regarding G-12, which is the Hawthorne Road repaving. I spoke with several of my neighbors, at least on the east end, I mean, on the west end of the subdivision. No one is really interested in having their road widened. I didn't speak to everyone, obviously, but no one's interested in having their road widened, so I just want to express my concern about that. And also regarding the Police Department, I fully support giving them raises and maximum hours or whatever else they need, especially if you're adding more TIDS and more population to the city, and I think they deserve to have all the support they can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Ms. Lewandowski.
Leroy Lewandowski, 8030 West Winston Way. I want to make a comment in regards to item 2, where you're going to rename part of the utility operations building for a man by the name of Luther W. Graffy. He's from Luther W. Graffy P.E. Conference Room. I don't believe that should be done because it's a company that has nothing to do. We've been spending a lot of money for them to give us engineering help, but to have these names put on specific buildings, like Bennett's name's on the outside, we have a mayor name on a DPW, we have Kayla in the park. All of these should not be put out there. I think that it's a disgrace to do that. And then there's the issue on D. It says there's a hearing. Is it a public hearing, or what is it? This is the second time that it appeared on here, and it's not going. The neighborhood doesn't know anything about it, and I object to the fact that you're trying to change the zoning of that area because it's commercial and it should stay commercial. And if you move into the city and you keep changing things, there's no point in people coming here. It's just like the Southview Street that has been blocked, and the master plan was that to go through, and that's ridiculous. And then they built a school in there, and that was supposed to be a park. So we've got all kinds of problems with changing the zoning, and it should not be. When you buy a house, the area is spaced at the time it should be continued on. This piece of property behind my property is zone commercial, and I'd like to see it commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one else rise, I'll close the Assistant's Comment Period. Move on to approval of the regular. We're going to skip item B2 for the moment. We'll come back to that. Let's do approval of the regular Common Council Meeting Minutes of January 30. Any additions or corrections? Mr. City Attorney?
January 20, January 3, 2023 minutes, the motion on the action sheet, and I did check with the city engineer as he drafted that and was at the meeting. The motion was to introduce the resolution as stated in the draft minutes, but the motion ended with "subject to legal and technical corrections," which is not in the draft motions in the action sheet.
Is there a motion to approve with that change? Barber and Nelson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No objection. I'd like to move to G1, which is a proclamation naming the conference room the John M. Bennett Utility Operations Center, the Luther W. Graffy P.E. Conference Room. Mr. City Engineer.
The Board of Water Commissioners has had a longstanding, as many of our commissioners do, some very dedicated members, and Mr. Graff, it was felt that deserves something a little extra special than what we typically do with our commissioners who pass on. Mr. Graff not only had local relevance, founding Graffy Engineering Architecture, but also had statewide recognition and national recognition and even international recognition. When the mayor reads the proclamation, it's a very impressive list of things, and Board of Water Commissioners felt it is very appropriate to honor Mr. Graff in some way, and this was the way that they selected.
What you didn't read on your council action sheet and in the proclamation is the years of service that Lou gave to the City of Franklin and the Board of Water Commissioners. Who served for what?
Actually, it's in the first line, "over 16 years." I read it. Whereas Luther, Lou, Graff, Franklin resident for over 30 years, served on the Franklin Board of Water Commission for over 16 years.
Questions from the council? Their motion is after resolution. Alderman Nelson, Alderman Holfer. All those in favor, let's do a roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Eichmann?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hanneman?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no no's, no absents, no abstentions. With that, we move back in the item, in the agenda, to the B2, which is a mayoral announcement, proclamation naming the conference room for Lou. And I asked Lorraine, his lovely bride, of 10 years, right? And his son Ron and his daughter-in-law Kathy to join me over here. Get comfortable, it's fine. This is a proclamation naming the conference room in the John M. Bennett P.E. Utility Operations Center at 5550 West Airways Avenue, the Luther W. Graffy P.E. Conference Room. Whereas Luther, Lou, as we all know him, W. Graffy P.E., a Franklin resident for over 30 years, served on the Franklin Board of Water Commissioners for over 16 years, whereas Lou Graff found peace with the Lord at the age of 90, August 11, 2022. Sorry, I lost two, but none. Whereas Lou was a highly intelligent, very hard-working man, serving the people for essentially his entire life and doing so not only in the government-public sector, but also private sector, having been one of the founders and ultimately the last surviving member of what is now Graff USA in 1961. They provide highly respected engineering and related services across America, formerly known as Graff and all Schlamer. I did business with them. Whereas Lou's service to the people included incredible achievements, not only in Franklin, not only across Wisconsin, not only across America, but across the world, in part including. He served as president of the American Society of Civil Engineers. He served as president of the American Association of Engineering Societies. He served as U.S. Representative to the World Federation of Engineering Organizations. He served on the Board of Directors of the World Federation of Engineering Organizations. He served six years on the Accreditation Board for the Engineering and Technology Inc. Board. He served 28 years on the Board of Assessment for the City of Milwaukee. Served 16 years on the Franklin Board of Water Commissioners. He's serving as U.S. Representative to the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization. Pretty good. He's serving as Engineering Representative to the United Nations. He's leading two people-to-people trips to China and Cuba, dedicated six civil engineering landmarks, and received the Kai-Epsilon National Honor. Honor Society? I don't know. He was co-creator of ASCE, Xcede and Engineers Without Borders USA programs, and he was served as U.S. Representative to Union Pan-America Association D. You have to read that. I can't do Spanish. A Spanish organization. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the common council of the City of Franklin, Wisconsin, that the conference room in the John M. Bennett P.E. Utility Operations Center at 5550 West Airways Avenue be named the Luther W. Graffy P.E. Conference Room, presented by the Franklin Common Council on the 17th day of January. Signed by me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for voting. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, move on to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the 2025 comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation for property 8301 West Old Loomis Road. This public hearing was opened on December 20 and continued to today. So it is open, we don't need to read the announcement again. So is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one rise, I will close the public hearing. But what that means is if the plan changes substantially, a new application will have to be filed and new paperwork issued, and the new notice go out for a public hearing. So with that, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Graffs. That matter is closed. Item E, organizational businesses, reappointments to the Tourism Commission. Any wish for separate action? Their motion to approve? Barber and Hanneman. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Hanneman?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Eichmann?
Aye.
And Holfer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no no's, no absents, no abstentions. We have no letters and petitions. We move on to item G2. I was wondering what that was. G2, which is an Environmental Commission recommendation, Ms. Ex is here from the planning staff, to pass on the no-mow May. Ms. Ex.
Thank you. And thank you, Common Council. So this item, at the May 17, 2022, meeting of the Common Council, this body heard a letter and petition from Ms. Debbie Davis requesting suspension of the noxious weed ordinance for the month of May in order to provide opportunity for pollinators to graze, as I recently learned is the term for what they do, in unmoaned lawn areas. This was a second request from a resident, and so this body decided to request the input of the Environmental Commission. So it was referred to them, and they reviewed the item beginning at their June, I'm sorry, at their May 25 meeting in 2022 and subsequently thereafter. So they did review a number of journal articles. A representative from the Weir Nature Center naturalist staff spoke to the commission at the request of the commission, and some of the findings are included here. So broadly speaking, there is some benefit to leaving lawns unmowed, and that was their finding, is that there is some benefit to pollinators early in the spring because the first thing to bloom is often dandelions and other species of plants. However, that benefit is kind of across the board for lots of different species of insects and not necessarily most beneficial to native insects. So this process is something that's relatively new, so there is a benefit, but that is also noted in their research that lawns in general are not beneficial to pollinator species. So their recommendation, given that Franklin is a community that prizes their lawns and views them as very ornamental, they did not want to put forward legislation that would be offensive to the community or make a recommendation that would deter people from planting native species. So their recommendation at this time is that this body take no action. I'm happy to kind of explain that a little bit more in depth, but they do further recommend that we begin to consider encouraging the use of native species in landscape plantings. That is something that is being discussed by the commission, and they will put forward plant recommendations at a future date. So they've taken some action already to do education and encourage the use of native species, including doing that at Arbor Day, providing seed packets to the community, et cetera. So I'm happy to take questions from the body, and that is their decision.
Alderman Wilhelm, then Alderman Nelson.
Thank you very much for that. That's great. I'm glad they're going to consider. I think as a council, we should probably make a formal motion because the Environmental Commission's recommending bodies, so I was going to suggest maybe we do that. And in that motion, I wanted to also include something like, it says, "The commission will make recommendations on," and then it says landscaping for species diversity and preservation. I would like to make that with Wisconsin native species, including options for trees and shrubs. And the other thing that came up when you were speaking, I thought about what kind of happens in our parks and our roadside areas, especially like 116th Street and that. So as we, most of us should know, plants have certain types of time when they seed, and there are beneficial times to keep the native habitat, when you cut the flower heads off and when you don't. And we've experienced this at Pleasant View Park, where MMST has seeded that area for a native prairie, and then we're responsible to keep it mowing or the buckthorn out. And so if you cut the seed heads off on the native seed before they, when they're blooming versus when they go to seed, you lose that seed that falls into the ground that competes with the weed seeds. So I think it would be really important to look at timing of when we mow our parks, whether it's too early in the spring or too late in the spring or too late in the fall or too early in the fall, based on when those species are blooming and need to produce the seed to drop, because we can probably get ahead of the game a little bit if we let the natives go and cut the weeds when they're in bloom. So that was my point. I'll wait for Alderman Nelson before I make any formal motion for the committee.
Nelson, then. Eichmann.
Very good. Good. Marion, thank you for that explanation. I'm new, excuse me, I'm new to the Environmental Commission, so I've learned a lot of what's going on, and I think you just characterize this very well, and I was, I had a part of emotion that I was going to read, but I think Alderman Wilhelm's is much more in-depth, so I'll yield at this point, but thank you for what you just brought forth.
Alderman Eichmann.
I just question for taking the time to do the research looking into that. I also wanted to suggest, if it has not yet been thought of, that once the native planting information comes back and so forth, that we could possibly share that information with the community in the city newsletter and the types of plants and so forth that are recommended. Thank you.
Alderman Wilhelm.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to make the recommendation to have the Environmental Commission look at recommendations back to the council for Wisconsin native species, including trees and shrub options, and also to review the native mowing practices taking place on city lands.
And what about no-mow?
I don't think we're doing anything with no-mow because they didn't say to do anything with, they're not recommending moving forward with no-mow. So this was the option to no-mow. Wasn't that the understanding?
That's correct. So they, the request was for their recommendation regarding adoption of or an action to suspend the weed ordinance until the end of May. Their recommendation is that that not occur.
So we're not taking any action on this. This is the alternative motion to that. We just don't take action on the one, and we go this other angle and try to get some natives in that.
Sir, second. Second by Alderman Nelson. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, move on to G3, which is to purchase a replacement ambulance. Mr. Fire Chief, I don't know that we need a presentation.
450 Type III ambulance in addition expenditures for mobile radio and various hardware and mounting brackets not to exceed 286,000, as was appropriated in the approved 2023 Equipment Replacement Fund.
Second.
And that's not to exceed 286,000. Second by Alderman Eichmann. I will point out that the chief is going to a different tactic this time with the box of the ambulance being replaceable, or the chassis being replaceable instead of the box, which will come at some savings to the taxpayers in the future years. And the delivery on this is next decade? 2024. And when's our new engine arriving? Okay. All right. On that motion to purchase a new ambulance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G4. Is Matt Becker, Matt? Oh, you're here. Good. Come on up. It's a presentation by Matt Becker, who is in charge of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Company. Matt, welcome.
Peggy, are you my driver? All right. Thanks for having me here, you know, and thank you for serving on the council. I have a lot of respect for the work you guys do in service of the city. You know, the whole goal here was to basically, at a high level, introduce you guys to the league insurance program and how that involves you. The council members are insureds under our policy, just as any member of the staff is, whether it's police, fire, HR, DPW, whatever. So it's probably important to kind of have a handle on what the insurance company can provide you if you need help in any areas, as well as what we see kind of on a statewide basis, coming from boards and councils of cities and villages that we insure. So first one is a, this is some form a colleague sent me in a prior life, it says, "Before God double-checked the zoning, Earth was going to have a really cool deck." And I think the point there is, if God can't understand zoning, then how are we supposed to make sense of it? But about the league insurance program, so quick kind of synopsis, there are 494 members of the program, all shapes and sizes of communities across the state, geographically spread. Our members pay about $30 million in premium annually, and we have about $52 million in surplus. And without going into the details, that's a healthy position. So kind of the takeaway here is, you know, our company is stable, strong here as a long-term partner for the city. You know, there's no risk of having claims paid, things like that. But even more important than these numbers is probably how the company is structured and how we operate it. So for your reference, as it says, we are a mutual insurance company. So what that means is we are legally owned by our members. So there are no outside shareholders, there's no private equity investors. Essentially, we can almost operate this as like a nonprofit, right? We don't have to make money for the sake of making money, and that's great for our members. That's almost why I'm in this job to begin with, is because I love that aspect of it. The other point is, you know, the Board of Directors of the League Insurance Group is made up of basically peers. So whether it's a village president, a clerk, a city manager, administrator, mayor, you know, they're all represented on our board. So the board and the company's interests reflect our members' interests, which I think is a huge, huge benefit to the program. And just to kind of bring that down to the City of Franklin, you know, we strive to have the best price, coverage, and service available in the market. We want a stable, long-term program. It's easier to budget, easier to manage your finances, and have reliability on us as a partner. So for Franklin, if we look at the last five years, your liability premium is actually down 1%. You know, that kind of speaks to our motto, we're not out to overcharge, make money, things like that. It's really a reflection of our philosophy there. Within the last five years, the league insurance program's given the city back about $333,000 in dividends. So again, you know, if the company does well, we're able to pay our claims, you know, properly manage the company. We will give the money back to our members. It's your money, you deserve to have it. I wouldn't want, if I was in your shoes, us to take more money than we need and just hold it. You know, I'd rather have you guys have it and use it to run your city as you see fit. So, I mean, one thing we know is municipal government is challenging. That's obvious to everybody, right? The landscape's always changing. Just think of the last couple of years, going through COVID, what that all means, but even what we think of as the more basic things, budgets, finances, changing legislation, whether it's state, federal, things like that. And then, you know, it'd be easier if there was just accountability to one group, but you guys are accountable to the public, you're accountable to each other, to the staff, the administration. So that makes it really difficult to manage sometimes. So through that, you know, we see that public officials can be faced with liability for your acts and decisions made within the scope of your duties. Now, that can occur if there's been a mistake made, it can even occur if nothing has been done wrong. All that needs to happen is someone feels like they've been wrong, and they can bring an action against the city or the council. So that's why we are here. Peggy's already ahead of it. Good job. That's good. So here's where we see the biggest issues across the state. There's no specific issue to speak to, it's common, all corners of the state, whether we want to talk Door County, Madison area, just down the highway a little bit, we see it everywhere, right? And by far and away, the biggest is surrounding land use, whether that's a development approval, a conditional use permit, even alcohol licensing, whatever that may be. It's a common area, and what we generally see as the issues here is conflict of interest or sort of the not-in-my-backyard mentality. We get that all over the place. Some people are saying, "I don't want this hotel built here because it's ugly," right? Or "It's next to my property." So we see this all the time. The other thing we see is open meetings violations, you know, whether that's an impromptu meeting at so-and-so's graduation party, or we're all meeting up at the local tavern to watch the game. You know, there's certain things that we always see kind of happen that can expose us to liability and potential issues. You know, walking quorums, whether that's discussions, emails, texts, they can be intentional or unintentional, right? You know, when that starts happening, those You know, when that starts happening, those things are open to public records requests. So you want to be really careful about those sorts of issues. Staying in your lane, you know, we, I've talked to a lot of administrators, clerks, whoever it may be, and just say, you know, my council isn't letting the staff do the job. I'm not saying that's an issue here or whatnot, but that's kind of what we see across, across the state as an issue. So, you know, governing as the body and not individually or letting the staff not do their job, micromanaging is where we see conflict, employment issues, lawsuits, things like that happen. And kind of the final kicker is social media, right? This is a really difficult area because of free speech. We all have personal accounts that we want to comment on. And whether we're commenting on municipal business on a personal account or just commenting on an issue in general, that can get impugned on the city just by your role on the council, right or wrong. That's kind of just the way of the world these days. So, and one thing that's kind of surrounding all these issues is they take a long time to play out legally and cost a lot of money. So what ends up happening is really lawyers just get paid $100,000, $200,000 to kind of tackle some of these issues and they can, they can get ugly. Next one. So congrats to Peggy. She reached deep into the vault for a video that the league produced a number of years ago called In the Scope of Your Authority that she wanted to play for you guys. And while a few years old, the message is right on point. So it kind of speaks to the fact that, you know, even many years ago, these issues are still, still going on.
Staff at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Plan, want to thank you for taking the time to view this program. Risk management professionals in Wisconsin and other states agree that when we educate our public officials, we can help to avoid the conditions that lead to litigation. The Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency has authorized us to share with you a program which was prepared to help recognize circumstances that can create liability in cities and villages. The themes are universal to communities throughout the country. There may be a few differences in how the courts treat issues in Colorado and Wisconsin. We'll talk about those at the end of the program, but the lessons that we can all take from this program are common to all of us.
Oh, hello, Dan. Congratulations on being elected as a council member.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm real excited about attending my first meeting and being sworn in, although I'm a little nervous.
Nervous? About what? You were elected by a landslide.
Well, there are several things I'd like to accomplish. But I'll be the first to admit, I have a lot to learn. I don't want to end up like former Councilman Smith. I want to have a successful term, but I don't want to end up being sued.
Hi, Dan, glad you're joining us tonight.
Hey, Bill.
Hi, I'm Margaret Taylor. I've been a council member here with the city of Cottonwood for 10 years and mayor for the last two. During my time with the city, we have made a lot of progress, but also a few mistakes. Certain members of the council have created messy liability situations that have cost the city a great deal of money, hurt our public image, and stalled important projects. And in some situations, elected officials have paid personal liability claims out of their own pockets. The purpose of this video and accompanying handbook is to help you avoid the mistakes that can lead to liability and identify best practices that will allow you to be successful as an elected or appointed official.
That's a lot of good information. Well, thanks, Bill. I'll see you tonight. Oh, Mayor, do you have a few minutes to discuss some of those past mistakes?
Sure, Dan. Come on in. Have a seat.
Thank you.
You referred to Councilmember Patrick Smith. He promised during his campaign he would never allow Megamart to build a store in Cottonwood, and he was pretty vocal about it.
Stay away, Megamart! Stay away, Megamart!
I've had similar opinions about giant retailers, although I haven't been as vocal with Mr. Smith. Where'd he go wrong?
Well, I don't think he ever accepted the fact that as an individual council member, he really didn't have the authority to act on his own. That's why Smith was never able to get anything done. He was pretty vocal about the few issues he was interested in, but rarely worked to build consensus within the council. Dan, pretty much everything we do requires collaboration within the framework of our council. Elected officials can't get anything done as individuals.
I see your point.
So the first lesson is to think and act in terms of we, not I. Apart from a few duties vested in the mayor, the laws that govern our city don't give any powers to individual council members. We've got a diverse council with a lot of different perspectives, and we can only accomplish our goals by working together. Now that you've been elected, your role changes dramatically. You're no longer an outsider promoting your own agenda. You now have to work with your fellow council members to accomplish the city's goals as a collective body.
Let me ask you more about Councilmember Smith. The Megamart deal, it was approved by the council, although by a close vote. What problems did Smith cause?
Remember all of his anti-Megamart statements? When it came time for us to actually hear and act on Megamart's land use application, he should have recused himself.
Hmm, so he shouldn't have voted.
That's right. He shouldn't have participated in the hearing or voted. Smith had made it well-known that he was aligned with the Megamart opponents. When we're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, such as when deciding on a land use application or liquor license, we must be fair and impartial. We can't do that if we've already made up our minds before the hearing. Councilmember Smith had made it clear that he opposed the Megamart application. He was not acting as a fair and impartial decision maker. Fortunately, the Megamart application was approved by a small margin. Otherwise, the city could have been accused of a due process violation.
Due process?
Yes, the U.S. Constitution guarantees the right to a fair hearing as part of an applicant's due process rights.
During my campaign, I talked with a lot of my neighbors who are also anti-growth. I expressed to them my concerns about protecting our small businesses from giant retailers. Will that prevent me from voting on similar issues?
Well, the question is, if one of those big retailers comes before the council with a land use application, can you be fair? Can you make your decision based only on the evidence you hear and the requirements of our land use code? And can you set aside your previous discussions with your neighbors?
I can't ignore my neighbors. They elected me to represent them, not ignore them.
I'm not saying ignore your neighbors. But when an application is pending, you should not have discussions with anyone outside of the hearing. Our city attorney calls these discussions ex parte contacts. Your decision in a quasi-judicial matter must be based on the evidence presented. So when your neighbors want to speak with you about a pending application, explain to them it's inappropriate for you to talk about the issue outside the hearing. Suggest that they come to the hearing so their concerns can be heard.
Hmm. Well, last year, I called Councilman Knoller and asked him to vote no on the pit bull ordinance. Did we engage in an improper ex parte contact?
No, that was a different situation. The council's consideration of a pit bull ordinance was a legislative matter. They were not dealing with the rights of a specific applicant under an existing law. The council was considering a new citywide law, so they were acting as legislators. Lobbying and other ex parte contacts are acceptable in the legislative context. But when you're in a quasi-judicial role, you've got to think and act more like a judge and refrain from engaging in or allowing ex parte contacts.
It makes sense when you put it that way. It's important not to base my vote on my biases or prejudice and only consider the evidence presented at the hearing like a judge.
Exactly. The other thing to keep in mind is to make sure you have no conflicts of interest when you're voting. If you were appearing before a judge and you learned he had financial or other conflicts of interest, you'd expect him to recuse himself, wouldn't you?
Well, sure.
Well, people who appear before us in a quasi-judicial matter expect the same. To be unbiased decision makers, we must be free from conflicts of interest. If we do have a conflict, we need to declare it, recuse ourselves, and not participate in the hearing or decision.
I think I understand. I think I recall reading in the paper about another incident involving Patrick Smith.
Oh, that was probably the lawsuit involving our library expansion. The council had selected a very qualified contractor to manage the project. Smith was always hanging around the construction site, thinking it was his job to micromanage the project. Needless to say, Smith ended up in a verbal confrontation with the contractor. Things got personal, and Smith started talking to other council members about terminating the guy's contract. He also spread some vicious, personal rumors around town about the contractor.
That was very smart. Did he get the contractor fired?
No, but the contractor sued Smith personally for defamation. Our insurance company declined to defend Smith because it was alleged he was acting outside the scope of his authorized duties and acting in a willful and wanton manner.
So that's why Smith had to pay for his own legal defense?
Yes, he was not acting within the scope of his authority as a council member when he started those vicious rumors.
I heard he had to take out a second mortgage to pay his lawyers and a large settlement.
Smith learned his lesson the hard way. Being outside the scope of one's authority or acting in a willful and wanton manner will result in a loss of liability protections and insurance coverages. That's good. Thank you. Now, Patrick Smith isn't the only elected official who's gotten himself in some trouble. Our former mayor, Joe Appleby, put himself in the middle of a personnel issue.
I think I remember this case. Tammy Williams was the director of Public Works, right? Didn't she try to stop sexual harassment in the street division?
What do you think about wearing something like that to work?
You guys are jerks, idiots!
Guys, I've told you about this before. You can't keep doing this. Bert, I need to see you in my office.
In trying to clean up the division, she fired the street supervisor, Bert Simpson. Mayor Appleby, who was drinking buddies with Simpson, was furious and made it his mission to get Tammy fired, and he succeeded.
You know, your job can't be replaced.
She brought a lawsuit claiming the mayor retaliated against her for trying to eliminate the harassment. The jury awarded her $150,000 in punitive damages that Appleby had to pay out of his own pocket.
Wow. What were the key lessons in this case?
First, don't act on the basis of personal motives. It was obvious Mayor Appleby wanted to fire Tammy Williams to get revenge for his friend Bert, and that was not in the scope of his authority. Second, we need to delegate personnel issues to the city administration. The council shouldn't be dealing with individual employees other than those who report directly to the council, like our city administrator. We should be focusing on the major legislative and quasi-judicial issues and leave administrative matters to staff. And third, never retaliate against someone for exercising their legal rights. Not only is retaliation against the law, but these claims are among the most difficult and costly to defend. We also had another fallout from the Appleby litigation. The press learned during the trial that Appleby was telling a lot of inappropriate jokes, and he was emailing them to the entire council. So the media demanded to see all of the council's emails over several years. Our study sure looked bad after the press got ahold of those.
Well, I didn't realize emails were considered public records.
Sure. While they're narrow grounds for not releasing them under some circumstances, the basic rule is that emails may be public documents that anyone can review. If you don't want something splashed on the front page of the newspaper, we need to keep it out of our emails.
At least we're not the only city making these mistakes. Remember the scandal involving Councilman Arnold over in Clarksville after he got stopped for speeding?
Yes, he was caught on television yelling at the police officer for stopping him. I cringed when he shouted at the officer, "Don't you know who I am?" Talk about an abuse of power. And that brings me to perhaps the most important lesson. As elected and appointed officials, we must use our powers wisely and with civility. To misuse our position is absolutely improper and is not within the scope of our authority. We shouldn't try to put ourselves above the law or try to get some sort of special privilege because of our position.
Explain what you mean by acting with civility.
Well, as elected officials, we're perceived as holding the most powerful positions in the city. Because of that perception, our words carry a lot of weight. A harsh or ill-conceived comment from any of us, especially if made public, can be extremely harmful to our employees' morale as well as our public image. I once heard Appleby refer to our female employees as the staff hotties. It was embarrassing. Also, we should not participate in or encourage staff bashing in public meetings. We need to keep the focus on issues, not personalities. And then during Tammy's lawsuit, some of the jokes the mayor told during executive sessions were made public. We took another bashing in the press for those. Negative behavior like that can affect our entire organization. If we set a bad example at the top, we can't be surprised when it filters through the entire workforce. I'm so glad we've moved on from those days.
This is eye-opening and a little frightening. Do we have any protections from liability?
Yes. Fortunately, we live in a state where our liability protections are strong. For one thing, we have an excellent governmental immunity act. Our Public Officials Liability Handbook has a good summary of our liability protections. But to retain these protections, we must stay within the scope of our authority and not act in a willful and wanton manner.
You've used those terms before. What would be considered willful and wanton?
Well, the actual legal definition is found in the handbook, but basically, it's the kind of conduct that got Appleby in trouble. When he got Tammy fired, he was more than reckless in disregarding her legal rights, purposely trying to damage her career.
Do we have any other protections?
Sure, we have excellent personal immunities recognized by our courts when acting on legislative and quasi-judicial matters. But we do not have strong immunities when dealing with administrative problems. That's another reason why we need to stay out of administrative issues.
Got it. Let the city manager do his job.
And finally, we've got good insurance coverage. But that coverage only applies when we act within the scope of our authorized responsibilities and does not apply to punitive damages, as Mayor Appleby learned.
I see how these are all in and related. Best practices, liability protections, and insurance coverages. And each area calls for us to meet certain standards of conduct. As long as we meet those standards of conduct, we should be okay.
I think you've got it, Dan.
Thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate you taking the time to share your knowledge so I don't have to learn the hard way. Thanks for your insights.
You're very welcome. And one of the other best practices we put into place is liability training. We hold a session every year for our council members, boards and commissions. We have a session scheduled next month.
Great. I'll be there. Great. Thanks again, Mayor.
Absolutely. Dan's a sharp guy. I think he'll make an excellent council member as long as he follows these best practices. Think and act in terms of we, not I. When acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, be fair and impartial. Don't make up your mind before the hearing. Base your decision on the evidence you hear at the hearing and the applicable law. Don't participate in the hearing or the decision if you have a conflict of interest, and don't engage in ex parte contacts. Refrain from personal or retaliatory actions. Focus on key legislative and quasi-judicial issues and leave administrative matters to the staff. And maximize your liability protections by staying within the scope of your authority and avoiding willful and wanton conduct. I hope this video has helped you identify how to stay within the scope of your authority as an elected or appointed official, maximize your liability protections, and enhance your effectiveness as a civic leader. Good luck.
Thank you again for viewing this program.
I think 11 Oscars were won. But even so, I mean, I think it kind of echoed a lot of what was already said, right? I mean, that is something that's countrywide across our state. So really kind of circling back to how this boils down to you guys as far as liability coverage. We provide liability coverage, which comes in a bunch of different forms. You have your general liability, auto liability, law enforcement, employment practices. And specifically of interest to you guys is the public official's liability. Now, in this, in this area of liability, coverage matters, right? There's companies out there that'll say, yes, we provide public officials coverage. But if you look into it, they may exclude land use. but if you look into it, they may exclude land use claims, or exclude non-monetary claims, things like that. You know, we strive to protect you guys as much as possible. Anything we can cover, we try and cover. So just know that that's our mindset, and we don't take having great coverage lightly. That's part of why we're here and why we exist. As far as claims in this area, five of the 10 largest claims that our company has seen have been public officials' claims, specifically land use claims, including the largest claim we've ever had, it was about four and a half million dollars in a land use case. So, I mean, that is, that's real. You know, we have some ongoing, right now, in many, many communities across the state. The coverage includes defense costs, so that's in addition to the limit of insurance you guys purchase. So, not only would we defend you and pay any damage award against you, but we pay for the attorney's cost to defend those actions against you guys. You know, all this we're talking about, you know, in the legal court, but it's kind of, you know, best practices are going to help you in the court of public opinion as well. That can be just as challenging and unforgiving as a legal court. The next one? Yeah, so what can we do? So, we are the League Insurance Program. You know, we work with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, which the city is a member of. That's the association that provides resources of all kinds to municipalities across the state. So, anything from legal resources, articles and opinions, on a whole host of topics, conferences that are put on a number of times throughout the year, including a one that's called Local Gov 101, which is kind of like a basics on what to expect, because a lot of people, when they're, you know, introduced to public service, you know, don't really have a good handle on what's actually going on in a city. So, number two is use and follow the advice of Jesse. Take it slow. Make sure if there's any questions on how to proceed, you know, run it by your municipal attorney. That's why they're there, to help. You know, if there's any questions that you need help on, we offer free legal advice through a firm we contract with at the League. We'd rather have you call and ask about something, rather than proceed not knowing. So, we're here to help. And number three, so, it says have a process for onboarding new council members, but that can also apply to ongoing education, right? Things are changing. You know, if you guys don't have a formal process, I would highly encourage you to look at that, you know. Provide people with something that creates sort of a reference book on the community demographics, organizational structure, the finances. You know, I can say I want to run and build the world's greatest amusement park, but if there's no money, it's not going to work, right? So, understand the role of the staff as well, you know, all the department heads, what they do, why they do what they do, the challenges they face, whether it's, you know, the police chief, Public Works, you know, the attorney, you know. Understand how they work for the city and how they can help you do your job. That's why everyone's here. And then kind of be a champion of yourselves for ongoing training. You know, there's constantly things out there that are provided in the HR area, the changing legislative landscape, best practice in this, and we're here to help. So, all of it's free of cost. There's no additional requirement other than effort, right? So, however we can help, that is why we're here. And I would say, contact me, any questions you have. You know, if I don't know the answer, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an expert on local government, I'm just an insurance nerd, you know? But we can find the answer. So, happy to take any questions.
Questions in the council? I'm sorry. Hello.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. So, when the city has a commercial liability insurance for a contract, and there are requirements under the city's coverage for $20 million, and then we're going to knock it down to one, if there is something that happens, is there additional coverage by the city that could take the place of that in the unlikely instance that that might happen?
So you're asking if you are requiring a contractor to have a certain level of coverage, and you reduce that down to $1 million?
Yeah, $2 million reduced down.
Well, if the contractor is liable for something, the city is not going to be liable. If there's any shared liability, that would have to be worked out on an individual basis. I usually encourage communities to remember that you're the customer, right? So the requirements that are put forth in contracts and agreements should be something that you establish in front, you know, of the process, and stick to it. It's in the best interest of the community.
Okay.
Now maybe just to take on to that, is we did work with Matt, and, can't remember the specialist you had, no, a specialist on liability insurance that you had to come up with our revised contract liability amounts?
Yeah, we're doing that, yeah.
So, the League is the one that's giving the advice on that.
Yep. Get those questions told.
And then, so, what was the other one I had? So if the aldermen or officials acting in their official position, and they're named as a defendant, how would, say, an alderman notify the insurance company, and what would be covered?
Yeah, I mean, what's covered kind of depends on the circumstances of any individual case, but normally, you know, lawsuits served, you know, to the clerk or whatever, and then, depending on your own internal procedure, usually gets forwarded to us for handling.
So usually through the clerk, then the alderman would go through the clerk?
Yep.
Okay, wait, this clerk, not the Director of Administration? Because one of the things that...
So yes, it is here, the Director of Administration, because I'm in charge of all the risk management for the city. So generally, in smaller cities, it's the clerk.
Yep.
In bigger cities, it happens to usually be this position. So, here, yes, we pass on any claims that come up. We pass them on to our insurance company, just in case. They make the decision, we send it through their claims adjusters, and they decide how they want to handle and proceed with it. And I think in the last two years, we've done that at least four times.
Okay, because one of the things that caught my ear in there was when it said something about, when people report directly to the council, such as the city administrator. So in our flow chart, the Director of Administration does not report to the common council. The Director of Administration reports to the mayor, and all the staff report to the mayor. So that leaves the alderman having to go through the Director of Administration, but actually going through the mayor. So that creates, in our structure, kind of creates what can sometimes be a political problem, because we're not going through a staff member, we're going through a political structure. So it makes, it's sometimes very complicated to have that structure in place, and especially when some of the staff members are direct cabinet members of the mayor. So, this council has a lot less say-so or ability to go through and get answers. So it's a lot, it's a different structure than, I don't know. I've been here under, this is the third mayor that I've, so this is the first time that it's ever kind of run this structure, so it's been a little bit of a challenge to get used to for me. But I'm not going to be here in April, so it'll be someone else's issue after that, because I'm going to be going. But I just wanted to kind of mention that flow chart structure for Franklin. So, and then I had a question on, what is the difference between, in our vouchers tonight, we have $11,000, almost $12,000 for League of Municipalities' membership dues, and then we have $208,729 for R and R Insurance Services? So one's dues, and one's those insurance policies. Now, what you're here, you're here under that whole list of $208,000 insurance?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the dues is to the League Association, you know, the association group that exists.
Okay. And then, related to the social media, what would you suggest municipalities do about the social media?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that's up to you. You know, certain communities want to have nothing to do with it, others use it as a way to communicate with their community. We just suggest that you have a policy around it, and we do have sample policies that other communities have utilized and put into place. It can either be taken or modified for your needs. I would say if you're going to have a policy, make sure everyone's aware and trained on it, whether you want to give everybody access to a post on behalf of the city, or run it through somebody, have it be consistent. We find that keeping it tight tends to be probably the better option, rather than letting things run wild, but that's up to you.
One of the things I've seen in social media is, there are a lot of community groups, not necessarily, the city doesn't have a social media page, but on the community groups, you know, officials oftentimes comment, and sometimes those comments might be underneath someone else's comments, and when that happens, the official's comment gets deleted. That, for me, creates open records retention of the elected official, and I had always suggested that if the city had their own page, it would be a lot easier. Any group can go over to the city page and nab something and go run with it on their private group, but at least for records retention and for the clerk, it seems like it would be a cleaner way to keep track of those officials making comments.
Yeah.
I didn't know if people do that.
Pretty wild and crazy. Everyone's kind of still doing it a whole bunch of different ways. Some's pretty, pretty open in how things work, some are very, very tight. You know, some have communications people that control everything. It's really kind of individualized.
So I have one more question, and I wasn't, not really sure how to phrase the question, so maybe I'll read this, and maybe you can help me with this. So, in the Wisconsin State statutes, under 62.115 Defense of Officers by the City Attorney, it says the common council of the city, however incorporated, may by ordinance or resolution, authorize the city attorney to defend actions brought against any officer, employee of the city, or any board or commission thereof, going out of the acts done in the course of employment, or out of any alleged breach of duty as such official office. So anyways, basically, it says the common council has the ability to do that. Would that then be in addition to your insurance, that the city would be doing part of that legal, or how would that work?
I've seen that happen before, where the city attorneys worked with our defense attorneys in handling a matter. You know, that's up to you guys and how you guys like to conduct your business. You know, our panel of attorneys are all municipally experienced, experts at what they do, so we rely on them heavily, should a claim come through for handling.
Okay. I'm really not sure if we've done this, and I've been here a long time.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, there could have been one years and years ago before I was even on, so I don't know what this policy is, but I just want to bring that. Thanks, thanks so much. I'm glad you're here.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Thank you, Matt.
Sure. Thank you.
Without objection, I want to move to item G11, which is an ordinance to amend section, excuse me, I've got water in my throat. 15-3.0413 of the Unified Development Ordinance, essentially to offer a special use to the property loan known as Tuckaway, as the Oaks of Tuckaway. Moved by Alderman Holfer, second by Alderman Nelson. All those in favor of that motion, signifier saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion curious. Okay, move back to item G5. Review of the Police and Fire Commission action regarding the request to raise the maximum accrual level for comp time for police sergeants. I guess this is Alderman Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, you know, bringing this back here, just, I understand we're going to let, allow sergeants, perhaps the chief wishes to speak on this item. My position has not changed, I fully support it, and I would just like to remind my co-electeds just a few basic points that have been brought up in the past. This comp time parity argument or position, to go from that 110 to 200, that hours, if a sergeant wishes to take off, that, use some of that comp time, it's limited and cannot create overtime. So therefore, it's not going to have a negative impact on the budget. Number two is, as I understand, as we argued last time, that yes, when you're a supervisor, you get other enhanced benefits and pay because you have a greater increased duty and responsibility on a daily basis. That goes hand in hand with the promotion. What I find is, doesn't make sense, is to take a promotion and actually take a lessened or a reduced benefit, and this is one of those cases. And I, what my position is, and my point is, is to simply make that parity and move on, and I rest.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow a sergeant to speak?
Second.
Now what do I do? Hold for Enahaneman. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion curious. Sergeant Hints?
Mr. Mayor and the common council, thanks again for your time and the opportunity to speak on this agenda item. At the last meeting, which I believe was in late November of last year, I detailed the benefits of increase in our comp time that Alderman Nelson highlighted for you. I'd respectfully ask, on behalf of the sergeants, the couple of them that are here tonight, that you render an opinion and respectfully consider to raise our comp time hours from 110 to 200. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Alderman Barber.
It originated to the council from the Personnel Committee, which I serve on the Personnel Committee, and just want to go through the process that they used. They reviewed all the benefits between all the different, the patrol officer, the sergeants, and the command staff, and found out that there were just differences and discrepancies, or not discrepancies, but there were differences in each class. And they were wondering what would happen to the rest of the collective bargaining process if something like this came forward. Their motion at that time was, after reviewing this on maybe four or five different occasions, and asking for more materials to do the research on it, their motion was to deny that and bring it forward to the council. So, I just want to bring the wisdom of the Personnel Committee and the effort that they did to come up with their conclusion. They raised the issues of, like I said earlier, the fact that there are differences, and the fact that this has an effect possibly on all collective bargaining for different levels within the staff, our police department, as well as different collective bargaining that goes on within the city. So, that was their concern.
Well, I'd like to make the motion, but since Alderman Nelson had brought this up, I'll leave the floor to him.
Well, I'd like to make the motion that the sergeants' contract have the ability to go from 110 hours of comp time to 200 hours of comp time, effective immediately.
Seconded by Alderman Wilhelm. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Holfer?
Oh.
Eichman?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Enahaneman?
No.
Barber?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
That motion is three ayes, three noes. The motion fails due to lack of majority. Thank you very much. Okay, next item is G5. Review of, we did that, we're on to G6, is request for the Director of Health and Human Services to reduce the .1 FTE sanitarian to a .4. Madam Director?
Would you like me to give you a brief overview of my request? Or do you have any questions specifically related to that?
Hold.
What will happen?
Okay, Mike, you're going to have to get my attention and turn your... Okay, Mike, you're going to have to get my attention and turn your microphone on because nobody heard any of that.
What is the need for going from point one to point four? Or what duties will be picked up during, for that increase?
It will be assistance in our inspections of our licensed establishments, so different retail food establishments. We aim to do an annual inspection of each establishment and with COVID-19 and our response being really focused on pandemic, or our work being really focused on pandemic response, we're hoping to return to pre-pandemic levels in the number of inspections that we are completing in the community. And just the astronomical amount of work right now on our sanitarian staff will be supported by the increase in FTE.
Alderman Wilhelm, then Alderman Handman.
Okay. So you're, you're doing mostly like food service restaurants?
Well, we do routine inspections on retail food establishments, so all licensed food establishments in the city. And then that also includes mobile establishments as well. So what you would think of as a food truck. We also do public pool inspections and then hotel motel inspections through our health department with our registered sanitarian staff. We currently have a full-time staff member and then we also have a very part-time point one FTE staff member and that's what tonight's request is for 2023 to bring her to a point four FTE.
And how do they work with the person that is on the next agenda item for West Alice? How do they?
That is unrelated in the sense of scope of work.
Okay, thanks.
Handman?
Especially given that this is going to be fully funded by a workforce development grant. I fully support and I will go ahead and make the motion for approval.
Second.
Now, that one was popular, but out of respect for his position on the Board of Health, we'll give the second to Alderman Barber. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're here for a few of them, so let's
I am, yes.
Keep on keeping on. G8 is a, oh, G7. I was one ahead because I wanted to point out that Alderman Wilhelm's data is in G8. So G7 is a motion to allow Director of Health and Human Services to sign an MOU with West Alice for the WIC program.
Still move.
Questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The annual report from the Board of Health is G8. Madam Director?
Thank you. I will be brief with this because you do have a copy within your packets, but happy to answer any questions once I've been doing a very quick recap. And then also you're welcome anytime to stop by our department and learn a little bit more. But this is our 2022 annual report or report to the community and it gives an overview on some of the services that we offer through direct service and then also the programs and initiatives we have. So going through the packet here on page number two, you'll see an outline of the work that we focus on. So recap on that is the communicable disease in our community with our public health nursing program. We focus largely on emergency preparedness, health promotion, disease prevention, and then that control of human health hazard. We work very closely with our Board of Health who meet regularly monthly. And then we have a fully staff department right now, which is very exciting and those members are outlined below. We have regular referrals to our department in terms of communicable disease. We complete rabies control follow-up social service referrals. So that's oftentimes those referrals from PD or the fire department in regards to falls, well-being for our residents.
Before you move on to that one.
Yep.
Lauren, please. 5,008 referrals for communicable?
Yes, we regularly follow up on communicable disease, but that number is greatly increased because of COVID-19. So we do still have
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks.
But in the hundreds is where our referral numbers typically are for communicable disease in a non-pandemic time. We recently had another one of our staffs become a certified car seat technician. So we have two staff members offering that service that is fun and new for 2022.
And Alderman, that's a big deal. So as you communicate with your constituents, we can fit and make sure a car seat's properly installed and train the people on how to put it in and out, which is a really big deal. So that's free service.
Highlighting that. On page five, we talk a little bit about how our initiatives come to be data-driven and how we really get that input and value it from our community members to drive what we do. Page six talks a little bit about environmental health. So that's what we just touched on in the last item, agenda, agenda item, and talks about some of the inspections and follow-up that we do in that regard.
And before you get off of that one, that one includes a new effort of ours, taking a look at some of our hotel motel issues and come to some resolution on that. The Health Department's been very good and instrumental in starting that effort. So continue on with that.
We also collect sharps within our department so that residents have a safe place to dispose of used syringes and needles. And last year we collected 1,500 pounds. So that's really a robust program that we have going. We're really proud of the 400-plus volunteers that we have and we're really excited that so many community members are interested in being involved in a variety of our programs and that many of you have worked collaboratively on. Some of those are outlined in the pictures below. They touch on our Adult Health and Wellness Day, bike rodeo, the spring walk run, those community connection events. And we talked a little bit about more of the programs that we do on page nine, some of those annual events that you see, such as the outdoor movie night, trunk or treat that we collaborate with the library on, healthy holidays, but also our Polish and Volition Franklin. So they have been active as a substance abuse coalition for many, many years now, working under the Drug Free Communities Grant for seven. So that provides a lot of opportunity to get involved and work to prevent substance misuse in youth and then also instilling community connection through different avenues as well. And their programs are outlined on page 11 and 12. And then always encouraging people to get involved both by utilizing our services and then serving as a volunteer role. So if you know of any of your constituents or yourself are interested in serving the Franklin community through a volunteer position, I encourage you to provide this information to them because they can become a member of our volunteer registry and outline what interests them the most so that we can reach out when appropriate.
And I see John Baganski in the audience. John is the President of Franklin Seniors Inc. Lauren didn't highlight that in her report, but Lauren and her staff and along with the Director of Administration were instrumental in restarting the seniors program. And thank you for the good effort there. That was a yeoman's job. She, she and her staff called every senior that we knew of and asked them if they wanted to be involved. And that resulted in a meeting with what, 25 people?
I think maybe even more than that.
Maybe more than that?
Yeah, it was a really robust turnout that John rallied together, so.
Yep. And then John missed the meeting and got elected president. So, and so there we have it. Questions for the director? Any questions? Seconded by Alderman Nelson. Alderman Barber moved the place, receiving place on file. There are many, many copies available in the Health Department if anybody would like them.
There are, yes.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Lauren. Item G9 is to reschedule the Fourth of July Common Council meeting to the Fifth of July. Any issues? There's a motion to reschedule the Common Council meeting to July 4th, 2023 to July 5th, 2023 due to a meeting falling on the Fourth of July and city offices being closed at that date and hard time parking because of the fireworks. It was moved by Alderman Eichmann, seconded by Alderman Nelson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G10 is to establish community document shredding event on May 13th with Stere Cycle. Mr. City Attorney?
Timing on this is appropriate because when I reviewed the agenda packet, I communicated with the city engineer to use the standard city form and that was prepared and sent over to the contractor and I'll let city engineer follow up on that communication today.
He was saying, I, if I could paraphrase, he basically said, or she said, take it or leave it. So I guess I would point to you, if you look on page 92, indemnification number nine, basically they hold us harmless, we hold them harmless. Quite honestly, there's, there's really not a lot of contact per se. There's going to be two trucks here. People drive up, our DPW actually takes things out of cars. So people don't even get out of their cars. We hand the documents to Stere Cycle's staff. Staff is, and their staff is the only one that even gets close to the shredders and so forth. So it's really just two trucks that sit out here and it's, it's really not a lot of risk, if you will. So basically if we like their contract, we can do that. If you want us to find their company, I'll have to find someone else that would be willing to sign our standard agreement.
Well, the primary issue that jumped out at me, including terms of where the realm would be if there's any dispute and it's not Wisconsin, but there's a limit on their liability to the amount of the contract cost, which is $2,400. So I inquired of the city engineer and did the hypothetical. Okay, what are these people doing as part of the service contract? And then what if somehow somebody's citizen or city staff ending papers to get shredded and somehow a button gets caught on the armor jacket of the person receiving it and somehow that ends up into a part of the shredder? Just a hypothetical. So I inquired of the city engineer along.
So.
Alderman Barber?
Um, I'll wait till it gets passed and then I may make a comment. My concern was, my concern is if it gets approved, that we would follow the same advertising we did for the community awareness using flyers or whatever we can to get that out because it was very well received last time. And I'm sure we'll have maybe not as large a crowd, but at least get the word out somehow to, so people can make themselves, so it's available to everybody that wants to use it. And emphasizing the fact that you have to approve, this time you have to have citizen or citizen proof, residential proof.
Yeah, I can tell you that my staff and I received multiple phone calls from folks looking forward to this. I think clerk's office has too. People are looking forward to it this time. Again, the major difference this time is the fact we will be checking for Franklin residency. We weren't doing that last year.
Did you check other companies who do shredding?
I did not. Stere Cycle was very helpful to us last year and if you want us to check other companies, I could.
I would urge the council to table this or at least another meeting so that we can see if there's another shredder organization, which I'm sure there is, that will comply with our insurance coverage requirements, Mr. City Attorney.
And I understand that part of the communication with the contractor and the city engineer was that to move forward, although it would be time, take time to do that, they could send the standard city form to their legal department and perhaps in addition to looking for other companies, that be suggested to this contractor.
The only, yeah, I'll do that. The other part of the conversation today was they given us two tomorrow to confirm the date. So in essence, we're basically pushing the date off later in the summer. So.
There's no harm in that.
No.
So is there a motion to refer this back to staff for research on different contractors who would comply with our insurance requirements and liability requirements? And that would include Stere Cycle? There was a motion on the floor there. Who made that motion?
I made the
Would you consider withdrawing?
I would consider. I was going to ask the city attorney if he would make the suggested motion for the change in my motion. Because I want to make sure it covers all his concerns.
I didn't hear the motion.
Well, we're not working with that motion. What we're working with now is what your suggestion is to make sure we legally get the coverage we need. So if you have a clear suggestion for that, I want to make sure that your concerns are addressed.
I think that was just mentioned.
Table it.
Refer to staff to, as the mayor stated, study availability of other contractors and you can add to that and request this particular contractor to review the standard city contract form for services.
Make the motion to
Got to withdraw your original one.
Right, withdraw the original motion.
Aye.
Okay, Alderman Wilhelm.
I'll make the motion, perhaps staff, look into other contractors, send the, what was the document you said, City Attorney?
Standard form contract with
Services contract.
Service contract to the current and to make sure that all concerns of liability are addressed and bring it back to the council in, in two weeks. You want more time than that? Or is that good? All right, two weeks.
Well, let's be clear because your motion said just to the, to this contractor. Need to find other contractors as well.
No.
It's withdrawn. It was withdrawn.
It said that to have him go look for other ones.
Okay.
And then give that, because Jesse said to apply there.
Okay.
She captured it.
With all due respect, we've got to do these more concise. So the motion is to refer it to staff to seek a new contractor or the original contract with standard form city terms. Is that your motion?
And to make sure that all liability are
Standard form city terms. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Alderman Eichmann. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Can I bring something?
Any opposed? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderman Eichmann.
My thought was just, we might want to take a look at that date of May 14th because it is technically a holiday weekend being Mother's Day. I just wanted to mention that and bring that up. I feel in the past with things, we don't have enough discussion on dates. Definitely not the 27th with Memorial Day, possibly May 20th. Just throwing that out there as a thought is all. I'll yield. Thank you.
Okay.
In all likelihood, it'll be later than this. It's sort of tabling the matter.
We did item G11 and we move on to G12, which is an authorization to bid the street program for 2023. You should all be aware that includes a library parking lot repaving as an alternate. We do that on purpose to see if we can get a better price on that. Alderman Wilhelm.
So, City Engineer, we have the map in front of us, which I had noted earlier, didn't cover the third district blue items, which are all the areas where we were planning to put in water. So now I can see why we didn't move forward with the contract because we want to redo the roads over there. So are we going to be able to coordinate that with the bid for the water? So they kind of mesh at the same time. So we have good coordination with doing the streets and putting in the water.
Are you talking about the Milwaukee connection?
No, I'm talking about the area on 31st. You have, you, this whole area in blue that was missed on the map. It's 50th Street, it's Minnesota, it's all the way to 49th, it's 49th itself. That whole area is where we've been trying to get the water put in for about two years.
Right. So the thought was is that we may or may not be able to get the water main project done in enough time to allow the asphalt contractor to move in. So we may allow for trenches to settle. So again, we're bidding all these all as alternates. Once we get the bids, then we'll make a firm suggestion on which roads we actually do.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's some coordination going on there because it's going to be ripped up for a while. And also it has, on your sheet, it has, what do you mean?
You're treating the engineering staff like they don't
I am not treating the
You are, you absolutely, you're questioning whether they're going to coordinate with the, with the pieces of paper on their own desk. That's why people leave.
Well, it wasn't even on the map provided to the council.
That map is there That map is there for convenience for the common council only.
I think my questions are appropriate. Whether you don't like how I say them doesn't mean you have the right to interrupt me and cut me down in the middle of it and make your own assumptions that I am trying to belittle someone. So that, that's your opinion and you can let me finish and then have your opinion when, when I'm done. But cutting me off, according to our policy, is not allowed. Every alderman has the right to speak without being cut off. So I would like to finish. Mr. Morrow, it says on there that it's ADA, mill overlay and ADA. I'm going to guess because there's no information that you just mean the sidewalk up on 51st because there is no sidewalk here. Is that what that ADA is referring to?
So i- if we could back up, you mentioned the Minnesota, the Minnesota's not on here? It's not on the list if you look on page 121.
I'm looking on page 121, right above the black line where it says West Minnesota Avenue from 51st to 49th. And I think you want to say from 50th or 48th. I think you want to say to 49th Street.
So ADA, I mean, that's probably a standard. If you look at all the rest of mill overlay ADA, anytime we do a major street reconstruction, we do have to look for ADA issues. So there may or may not be any for this section, but we do have to look at each one. Keep in mind that we haven't, we're still fully developing the projects for each of these streets. Right now, we just listed the streets. Right now, staff is still computing. So on this street, we have to do this many feet of curb, this many, so forth, so forth. We're just asking for permission to bid it. They're not ready to go out to bid yet.
I guess I had some questions about the ADA and where it was going to be because I didn't know if there was enough right of way and how we were going to do that.
We haven't. It's, if you notice, that's just a standard mill overlay ADA. We have to consider that per the ADA codes. At any time we do a full reconstruction of a street, we have to consider ADA issues. There may or may not be any ADA issues there, but many times there are.
On the one above that, which is also a mill overlay, which is 49th Marquette-Rossen, that's not ADA on that one. So that was what made me wonder why one had ADA and one didn't.
That's a good question. I'll have staff call you tomorrow. I don't know, maybe it has something to do with curbing gutters. I don't know, we'll have to check. It's a good question.
Okay.
I believe Alderman Nelson was next and Alderman Hofer.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Engineer, thank you today for taking my calls. I know we went back and forth on a few things. I've had some questions and I believe you have, you've clarified them. But I'm going to ask them again so they can be put on record and those that are listening home can be satisfied with their concerns regarding the Hawthorne Road. And I'm very, very happy that that's getting addressed and fixed because that is a very bad, bad road. Now, there's concerns and there's documentation here about widening the streak in certain areas. I know it's similar to Mayor's, but if you could, Mayor's Drive, if you could just simply just kind of restate real briefly like you did earlier, why that's important?
For the most part, the western half of the Hawthorne neighborhood has roads that are wide enough, but there are some pinch points where it's 15, as low as 15, sometimes 16 feet. So we don't want cars, you know, scraping paint as they drive by each other. So we're trying to widen it to 20 foot at the minimum. That would, you know, put two feet on each side. And of course, we'll be conscious of trees and other things that may be in the way.
Thank you. So basically just adding in some areas, two feet on each side, which is not really a big deal, but it's a big safety issue and it's a big, not big, but it's, it's an issue. And that's how we're going to address it. I guess number two is there was a question from a resident that's not in attendance tonight regarding special assessments from this. So I don't know where that came from, but there is none. Is that correct? That this is simply a road project, road project being done?
Some cities do special assess for street projects, but we don't, we have not here in Franklin unless the common council were to change courts of action. That's not planned.
Thank you very much. I yield.
Hey Glenn, in the future? No, there is no special assessment. Don't even bring it anyway. Okay, who else? Alderman Hofer.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the crack seal and seal coat. So you're going to seal coat the entire roadway?
So again, we're still working on specs, looking at each one. We're calling contractors and, you know, getting opinions, but don't quote me again, we're still working on specs, but I'm looking probably just fog seal this year as opposed to what we did last year was the scrub and the, if you will, the chip and seal. We'll probably do more of a fog seal, which is kind of a fine mist oil over the road.
Yeah, I would not be looking for any more chip and seal for.
Well.
Especially the residential areas.
Trying to figure out how to make roads last.
What's the drivability time on doing just a fog seal?
Very minimal. Power at the most.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion? We don't have a motion. Is there a motion on this matter?
Move to authorize staff to advertise for bids for both contracts for the 2023 local street improvement program, including the library parking lot as an alternate bid option.
Seconded by Alderman Aikman. And discussion of that motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to G 13, which is a substitution of alternate insurance for the Minnesota project.
Insurance coverage provision in the contract for West Minnesota Avenue and South 50th Street Water Main Extension Project with Willcome Excavating and Grading Inc.
Is there a second? Okay.
Do we know what timeframe this might happen?
Do not have a firm date yet, but we expect it in the springtime. This will help get them ready.
All those in favor of reducing the insurance requirements signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Substitution, not reducing.
Substitution, yes, that's what the motion says.
Motion carries. Move on to G 14, which is to authorize signing a temporary limited easement for the land out in front of the police department for State Highway 36 reconstruction. Is there a motion? Mr. City Attorney?
Only just one point for the record with regard to the materials involved, including the guide provided by the Department of Transportation. They cite on page one, the Wisconsin Constitution, Article One, Section 13 establishes eminent domain authority, which is the power to take private property for a public purpose. So anyway, under review of the reality and the facts of this matter and what it is with the agreement of the city engineer, consent to this particular temporary easement and waiver of appraisal, subject matter is due to the specific facts hereof.
In other words, they don't have right to take this, but we're being nice people and it's to our benefit to allow them. So let's be nice people. Alderman Wilhelm.
Yeah, I was going to ask, since I can't see the color codes or where they're at, is this a standalone path or is it within the roadway?
So the pathway, which is really a wide sidewalk, will be in the right of way. This temporary easement is really needed so that they can, they can grade out on our yard and make it nice.
Well, I was confused by that because of the whole thing about the eminent domain that was in here. Because under the, the bill that was enacted in September 27th, the legislature changed the law to prohibit municipalities from using eminent domain to establish or extend a recreation trail, bicycle trail or bike way or a pedestrian lane. You can do it for a bike lane within a roadway, but you cannot do it for a standalone and a recreation. So eminent domain is not even applied here, so.
This is not a trail, a bicycle pathway. This is a sidewalk. So sidewalks, you can do eminent domain.
Right. Pedestrian walks, it says you can't do it for any of them under that. The Wisconsin statute 32.315 in September 2017, it says that they changed the law to prohibit municipalities from eminent domain to extend a recreation trail, bike, bicycle, pedestrian way, and list them all. So I don't think this.
As I was told for sidewalks, they can. So this is, that's just what I was told.
The matter is moot anyway because they can't, in the domain of a city, and we're going to let them do it anyway. So can we, did we take a vote on this? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney.
Issue, when I did review it, it was before, then it turned into, oh, this is only a temporary easement, so it backed off. But doing the research, et cetera, I did also confer with the league council for the League of Wisconsin municipalities. It's not 100% clear as to the eminent domain situation under the law. It appears to be that way. So just be accurate in.
G 15, page 143, a resolution to execute a subdivision developers agreement for Pleasantview Reserve. Alderman Wilhelm.
I would like to just be able to easily make the resolution and authorize this. However, we have some house cleaning. I did ask the clerk to provide me Resolution 2021 7763, which I pulled up the one that was in the council packet approved by the common council, and they are quite drastically different. Back when we approved the resolution, there were complications about phase one and phase two. And I bring this up because historic records on this cannot be followed. There is quite a bit of changes. So we had this whole video tonight about how we can't change things, but this document should come back to the council for, for all the changes that were made. It doesn't even match what's in the council packet. And the reason why this is so important is the original resolution says that the pedestrian trail shall be 10 feet wide, paved and stalled simultaneously with the construction of 49th Court to the connection point of the Pleasantview Park and a must line with future trail. The construction of 49th Court is done. And that hasn't been done. So it says if any one or more of these conditions are not satisfied with 180 days, then it's can be rejected on the final plat. So we don't want that to happen. So one of the reasons this phase one was supposed to include the trail off of 49th Court was because it was an alternate emergency access to our park that had an overly extended UDO cul-de-sac length part to the park that was a dead end street. That's why we wanted it in phase one. The homes, somehow phase one and phase two got switched after the final plat was approved. And now we still are on, we're actually on phase one is done, phase two is done, and we have no trail. So at minimum, I think we need to bring the resolution back and make sure that it jives with the final plat or we need to maybe amend the final plat. I'm not sure, but none of these records correspond to each other anymore based on what we passed. So I'm going to make the motion just to allow this to go through. But we have another thing where the subdivision development agreement, and we have phase one A and we have phase one B, the resolution doesn't talk anything about phase one A, phase one B. It's just phase one and phase two in the resolution. So now we're adding extra development sections that aren't even part of what we passed with the final plat. So can we somehow bring this back and get these documents straight for historical purposes? So I will make the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing certain officials to execute a subdivision development agreement with the subdivider of Pleasantview Reserve subdivision, Phase Two A, located at West Marquette Avenue and South 49th Court, and to bring back Resolution 2021 7763 for clarification of the common councils and any revisions for consistency as necessary.
Is there a second to that? Second. Okay, that's fine. The better motion, I believe, would be to refer it back to staff to reconcile the two documents and bring it back to the next being would be the better motion. But on the, on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's try this again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, with that, we move on to G 16. A resolution on installation of target pickup signs within the easement. Alderman Aikman.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. City Engineer.
There's been a lot of conversations going back between our city attorney and the attorney for the target, and so may I suggest legal and technical corrections are appropriate?
There. I can't believe that this is an issue. Mr. City Attorney.
There were some changes, ink and some other things, minor?
It was minor. It was just with regard to the signature.
Okay.
At the title of the officer signing and the name of property owner should be entered. That was it.
Alderman Aikman. Do you approve the motion?
Okay, no amendment, excuse me.
Do we have a motion?
On lot two, the CSM number 8,7800, South Lever's Lane Road, tax key number 794999004.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Alderman Hofer. All those in favor of the motion, city officials saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G 17 is a special use extension for Spudo cheese. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Hanneman, seconded by Alderman Barber. Alderman Wilhelm.
Did the applicant request this?
There is a condition in our code, in our unified development ordinance, the conditions, and it's spelled out in the document, I believe, that conditions the special use to expire based on, on an occupancy permit, not a building permit. Therefore, the answer, the direct answer to your question is no. I'm not sure that I would pick up the phone and call Spudo and say, hey, no, we passed something that's really kind of ridiculous. We just went ahead and fixed it. And that's what this is.
Well, can I just clarify what you said?
Sure.
You said occupancy versus building and the whereas says the subject special use document has received a building permit and it says that it's based on building permit.
The UDO says occupancy.
Okay, so we have a difference in our UDO in this document that we passed.
This document is, for this instance, making it building.
Okay. And it also says the reasons for this extension are set forth within the resolution. Could we be more specific on why? Because it just says market changes.
If you look at, if you turn to page 182, the second whereas, the very last sentence, special use has been established by way of the issuance of an occupancy permit for such use. If we let that stand next Wednesday, they have to shut down. Or tomorrow, they have to shut down. Plain and simple. The next paragraph, the next whereas, down towards the bottom, third line up, fourth line up, says plan commission, special use, changes it to say, no, period longer than one year unless a building permit is issued and construction is actually begun, which it has. So they may continue. Common council choice. Common Council choice, shut them down or make the change.
Well, obviously, it wasn't, my comment wasn't to shut them down. My comment was for clarification, and I think you did a nice job on that. Thank you very much. It's pretty vague.
Quoting resolution.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. By the way, just so somebody doesn't ask, and there's no subterfuge going on, the site plan was also having the same issue and was approved by the Plan Commission as is outlined in the city code. Okay, G18, on page 191, is a resolution authorized task order number five for Rooker and Milkie for 50, almost $50,000 to study the two stormwater management proposals and potentially others as outlined by the county supervisor and the city engineer. Hanneman and Barber, all those, push your button, Ed.
So the city engineer, do we have any idea of timeline on how long it will take to do this?
I would guess at least a month, probably more like two months might be appropriate.
It shouldn't be three.
I will push hard on them. There's a lot of moving parts in this, so.
Yeah, there are in it, and so we'll have a full range of options to discuss in finances, et cetera.
Correct.
Thank you.
As far as range of options, I wanted to bring to your attention this Bergman Park. It's a project in Colorado, and I thought this was a good example of detention vaults because they also deal with cold weather. And one of the things is the filtration issues for treat, pre-treatment prior to the vaults on that. So that requires yearly vacuuming, which would be an added cost, so I didn't know if that would be looked at. But one of the other options are, it talks about purchasing other buildable lots. I thought maybe looking at the sewer pack identified historic resources rather than purchasing buildable lots, INA, secondary and primary environmental corridors, if that still would be an option for a park spot. Because I don't think we've ever looked at the, they're all identified in Plan 176. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney.
Only that, this particular task order is $49,795, and the resolution refers in its title and in the resolve only to the total amount of the services contract of $444,550. So I would suggest that the motion be subject to technical corrections by the city engineer to simply state that this is for $49,795, and then refer to the ultimate contract then being the total cost thereafter of the $444,550.
That's part of your motion, Alderman. Alderman Barber. Anybody else on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G19 is a change to the Minnesota ordinance 222-3.B to reconcile some fees issues. Wilhelm and Eichmann, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Mr. City Attorney.
Is there a handout on this one tonight? Only with regard to, it's another technical corrections, and I did let staff, as with all the other ones, know about it, the draft of the ordinance, which becomes a forever record, as in Perrin's, right in the start of section one, that the changes, Perrin, additions double underlined, deletions in strike through, and additions are single underlined, and the deletions are deleted, but it's doubled, strike through deletions, the light suggested. Correct that.
Without objection from the common council, those issues will be cleaned up. G20, adding stop signs on Hilltop and 42nd.
No progress.
Hanneman and Eichmann, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. By the way, the staff does not recommend this, but the Board of Public Works went along with it, so off we go. G21 is carry forward for 2022 to 2023, $2,917,899. There will be another one of these coming. Alderman Wilhelm.
Could I get clarification on item seven for the Franklin senior citizens? I noticed that we previously had a voucher for $5,000 that was signed and gave to the Franklin senior citizens. And then there is also in the vouchers this evening for the Root River Center of 690. Just to understand this before this gets, you know, we're trying to go against the seniors and all that language. It's not what this is about. This is just to try to understand how we're funding them and what we're funding them based on those two previous vouchers as it relates to that $5,000.
So this is based on the $10,000 budgeted item. The money that was given to the senior citizens, Inc. group, was their own money. We were just giving it back to them. We were holding it for them while they were reorganizing. They asked us to hold it for them until they got their legal papers in order. Once they did that, we gave them their money back. They have spent, or they're, at the end of 2022, they spent $10,000 minus the 5466, and just like the other senior group, they're just asking to carry that over to use it for the seniors in 2023.
Okay, so does the Root River signing money, that 690 a month in here, is that part of that 10,000? Is that how we pay that out?
That might have been the January one. I'd have to look at the list. Does the voucher say the January lunch?
I don't know which one.
So if it's January lunch, it's not included.
Okay, so that 690 that we paid to the senior centers part comes out of that 10,000 and it just keeps?
Not, it's not, if it says January, which I believe the January lunch we paid for, it would be the new 10,000 that comes in 2023.
Mm-hmm. That's where it comes from, is that 690 comes out of that.
That's where that money comes from, exactly.
Okay, that makes sense to me, okay. And then the other one is on the security improvements. This was a motion that I made when Suzanne Mayer was still in Alderman. Are we going to do the security improvements? This was back when we were, this is, Mark Liberta was here at that point when my motion was to use the rest of the City Hall money to make security improvements to City Hall.
I'm not sure what you mean by the rest of the City Hall money, but this was just budgeted in 2021. I asked the council to carry over other funds that had nothing to do with City Hall to have some security money to be able to make these improvements, and then we've just carried it over. But yes, it is going to be done, so 2021 was when this was budgeted.
Okay, but if you look back when we were redoing parts of City Hall in the front of the building, we saved quite a bit of money, and so some of that was motion to go towards security.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Is there a motion to carry these appropriations forward? Barber and Hanneman, Madam Clerk? Oh, wait a minute, Alderman Holfer. Sorry.
Regarding items number four, the merit pay pool, and 14, the carbon gutter replacements, I just want to ask on the record or make note on the record that the city makes effort, every effort to get this done this year so that we don't keep putting it off, and especially like the merit thing, that's been off, pushed off a bit, and I'd like to see that caught up so her employees have that opportunity. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Hanneman.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Eichmann.
Aye.
And Holfer.
Aye. Motion carries. Six ayes, no nos, no abs, no abstentions. Item G22 is a statutorily required report on housing fees for 2022. Questions? Is there a motion receiving place on file?
No move.
Second. Who's gotten the least amount of seconds today? Alderman Barber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G23 is a assignment and assumption of a tax assessment agreement. This moves from Strauss to Selco partnership. Discuss the allocation. Your motion approved.
It wasn't clear to me when we say we are signing the tax assessment agreement if this will be the higher amount. Could we get in there the guarantee on the Second Amendment, which makes the higher value? So everyone's clear, so there's no question. So I have the agreements here, but I don't know what the, that second value was.
That's part of it, being assigned.
So we're assigning both the original and then the second part, which updates or makes the value higher.
They are all one.
They are, they are all one in the agreement. Well, the one is attached to the special use, the assessed value.
It was amended, and every amendment says, we're changing this, that, and this on the original, and the rest of the original is in place. So it's ultimately one agreement, even though there's a First Amendment, Second.
Okay, but the agreement says it only jumps to the higher value if we approve this UP, so are we jumping, are we saying to that value?
No, it does not.
So what, the mayor just said the amendment took that out.
It did.
Okay, I didn't see where it came out, and I have them here, which would have been good to have in this packet, but, okay, it's fine.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item H, licenses. There are none. Aye, is vouchers and payroll. On the transfer? I'm sorry, let's back up. We did not have a motion on G whatever that was, 20.
No move.
Second. Moved by Barber, seconded by Nelson. Again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Vouchers and payroll. Is there a motion approving the following? City vouchers and any dated January 12, 2023, in the amount of $3,254,064.76 in property tax disbursements that ended January 12th in the amount of $45,492,725.86, and payroll dated January 13th in the amount of $502,337.35, and payments to the various payroll deductions in the amount of $294,916.44 plus city matching payments and payroll estimated for January 27th in the amount of $460,000, and payments to the various payroll deductions estimated of $475,000 plus city matching payments, and approval of release payments to American Power Equipment, the amount of $3,325.39, and approval of release payment to Veritec Industries in the amount of $19,980. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Eichmann.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Hanneman.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no nos, no abs, no abstentions. Madam Director, which one are we going to do first? Out of objection, move to item 26.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, 26.
Peggy, it's your last meeting.
27, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to item 27 because we're paying for the attorney. Is there a motion to enter closed session pursuant to 19.85 sub 1 sub G to confer with legal counsel for common counsel's rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to subject litigation and reenter open session in same place thereafter to act on such matters as is appropriate?
No move.
A second.
Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Hanneman.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Eichmann.
Aye.
And Holfer.
Aye. Motion carries. Six ayes, no nos, no abs, no abstentions. We're going to close session. It's 9:17, we're back in open session. Is there a motion to direct staff to proceed as discussed and closed? Holfer and Nelson, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to G24. Is there a motion? As Franklin Community Advocates Edals versus City of Franklin in Strauss brands Milwaukee County Circuit Court Case 20 CB 7031 is a litigation matter which is in process and pending at this time, is there a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 1985 sub 1 sub G to confer with legal counsel for common counsel was rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to the subject litigation and reenter open session in same place thereafter to act on such matters as discussed therein as it seems appropriate? Barber and Hanneman, Madam Clerk. Okay.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Eichmann.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Hanneman.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye. Motion carries. We are in closed session.
Recording stopped.
We are back in open session. Attorney Bittar, you have a suggested motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the motion, motions.
Barber and Hanneman. Madam Clerk, let's do the roll on this one.
Aye.
Eichmann.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Hanneman.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye. Motion carries. Six ayes, no nos, no abs, no abstentions. With that, move to G25 on page 237. As Franklin Community Advocates versus City Franklin, Milwaukee County Circuit Court Case Number 22 CB 523 is a litigation matter which is in process and pending at this time. Is there a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stats 19.85 sub 1 sub G to confer with legal counsel for common counsel's rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to the subject litigation and reenter open session in same place thereafter to act on such matter discussed therein as it seems appropriate?
No move.
Second.
Holfer and Eichmann, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, nope, sorry. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Hanneman.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Wilhelm. Eichmann.
Aye.
And Holfer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no nos, no abs, no abstentions. We are in closed. So again, her time was, with us was lots shorter than we wanted to. Please take some time, and don't buy her lunch because we need her to finish things before she leaves, but do wish her well and pat her on the back. I appreciate your service, Peggy. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Barber and Hanneman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry, I did this wrong. It is now 9:54. We are back in open session. No action to be taken on that item. A motion's been made, and the second- A motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.